I thought it was like.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I know it better, I'll be honest.
That is awesome.
Sold three million in real estate on Sunday. In one day. One day one.
That is pretty good.
There was a dang good Sunday, Sunday right there. I am not complaining.
Now, he could go.
That's good, that's awesome.
And play all the JB ball he wants to play. But she can't play bar.
What is this?
I got it.
We went back there and raided the treasure workshop. Tammy knows how to stock that thing up. We need to put her on the budget, Smitty. Food and entertainment.
We can do that.
I love it. He's putting you on the budget.
Oh, I can handle the entertainment. I don't know about the entertainment. I can handle food all day, but I might get the entertainment part.
How are you?
All right. How are you?
Just good now.
What do you mean?
You're welcome.
I'm not stunned. What you doing, Mr. Blair? How you making it? Yeah? You staying COVID free?
Good athlete.
That's what I thought.
I'm not trying to COVID party the right way, Gil just get up. One thing's absolutely hard known to them. President of the United States can get everybody. I suppose it's been long, six thirty to that. I don't know, we had family a bit last night, we had pressed up.
He came at the start of the second semester.
Yeah, so yes, oh, sixteen hour day yesterday.
You missed the break, didn't you? There's plenty of pictures after everything.
Okay, we got Susan here, we got Tammy.
Here you, here you, Mayor, Chairman, let's go.
Okay, I'm gonna call the order. The Loudoun County Commission meeting for October fifth, two thousand and twenty. First up is Jim Jenkins with two zoning resolutions.
Everybody listen close, cause we're not gonna read them again.
No.
Thank you. So the first one's a resolution amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to Chapter seven, thirteen dash seven dash twenty five of Tennessee Code Annotated to rezone approximately thirty-two point four acres from R one P U D suburban residential district with a planned unit development overlay to an A two rural residential district, Highway four eleven tax map, zero eight four parcels, zero four four point zero zero situated in the third legislative district.
Okay, the next one.
Next item. This is a resolution, uh, the Loudoun County Commission accepting Field Stone Drive, Millstone Lane, Graystone Court, and Collison Drive, Flagstone Boulevard located in Stone Crossing subdivision into the public routes waste system. Sand Brook is located in the fifth legislative district of Loudoun County, Tennessee.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
We'll vote on those under number seven on the agenda. Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against either one of these? Okay. We close the public comments on the zoning resolutions. I've asked Commissioner Duff to open the meeting. Please raise for the pledge and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the use of liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to ask your forgiveness and to seek your directions and guidance. We give thanks that we live in a country where we can assemble and be about our country, our county's business. We ask your blessings on each person here this evening. May our actions be representative of your teachings. We also pray for those in harm's way. May your presence be felt. We also ask thy blessings on the citizens of Loudoun County and our nation and our respective leaders, including our president. Teach us how to love each other in life, in death, in life beyond death. Thou art Lord. Praise be your name. Amen. Tammy, call the roll.
Muster, here. Mears.
Here.
Hurley, here. Tinker. Satterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Duff.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or change the commission agenda tonight.
I do have the, uh, filling questions about the commission choosing to vote tonight about the jail entrance and the quote we have read as well as a grant I'd like to have added. Uh, Homeland Security, this is a no match, we get every year, they just don't have an effective timing with it. Please commission, I'd like to add it, it's a seventeen thousand dollar no match grant.
Okay, we'll put that under two and three, under your name there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes?
Make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept the September eighth, two thousand and twenty Loudoun County Commission meeting minutes.
Make a motion for approval of the minutes as a writ, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is general public comments. First up is Rich Anklund.
I spent the last fourteen, sixteen hours going over the information that was provided to you all for the joint meeting of Loudoun, North City Commission that six out of the ten of you attended and attached to the email of September twenty ninth was the Sand Tech operating agreement, Loudoun County Solid Waste Commission, Sand Tech Second Final Amendment draft, and a summary of the proposed information. The summary was a single page. The draft is like twenty pages. So anything I talk about here tonight will come directly from one of those three documents. I have some major concerns with what was presented to you. I have some major concerns with what's going on with that landfill. Aside from the fact that Republic Services is buying it, has been since January. Some of the statements that were made by the Sand Tech personnel during that meeting have found to be a little less than truthful. They say that, according to Kevin Stevens, that back in February when this first was published, that Republic Services buying them, that Kevin said, oh, don't worry about that. That's just some kind of thing that goes on in business, the world these days. And some of you might remember on Memorial Day weekend, I sent you all an email with a link that said it was supposed to close in the second quarter. Well, didn't quite do it in the second quarter. You're now saying before the end of the year. Couple of statements that the CEO said that they're only taking in two point four million. The last four or five years, I've counted three million. The split is ninety-ten. They get three million, we get three hundred thousand. If you didn't like the first contract, I don't think you should like the second amendment, and here's why. As far as the land usage, forty-one acres were being expanded to sixty-seven point two. This is within the confines of the original landfill. With only fifty-three of those sixty-seven slated to be filled. So that's an additional twelve acres over the forty-one. But they're asking to permit twenty-six point two over the forty-one. So why are we putting down sixty-seven point two? What's the purpose of it? Unless there's something further out. Contract extension. Contract is extended to an earlier date that Sand Tech fills the amended footprint on or before December thirty-first, twenty thirty-eight. Twenty thirty-eight is an eleven-year extension to the twenty twenty-seven current contract. But Sand Tech says they expect to fill that extra twelve acres by twenty thirty-five, three years earlier. So there's two dates that are purported in the summary, that are purported into the contract that do not rhyme between them. So why is the contract being extended for three more years, about twenty thirty-five, if they're gonna be done in twenty, or is it twenty thirty-eight, if they're gonna be done in twenty thirty-five? Elevation, this has been a valid contention since I ever started going to these meetings. The elevation of the current cells that are filled, when you go up into the thing, everything on the left until you get back to where they're open is at one thousand seventy feet. For years, I've heard that the original contract says, close as you go. For years, Sand Tech said no. For years, they're still saying they'll close them eventually. And they'll close them to the eleven twenty-five, or they're now conceding that it would be a thousand nine hundred three. Three numbers, ten seventy, thousand ninety-three, and eleven twenty-five. What number is their stated final height? And why do we have to keep talking about the same thing over and over, the last five years, ten years, fifteen years? The contract that was originally written specifically addresses that, saying close as you go. So what does Sand Tech's obligation for obligations? All fifty-three acres, the forty-one plus the twelve, are stated to cost nine million dollars to close. The mass says that that's a hundred and seventy, thousand dollars per acre to get to nine million. But it also has been previously stated, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in today's post. Don't do it with the CPI, don't do three percent annual, don't do this other garbage. Why aren't we closing the first fourteen? At a hundred and twenty-five, that's a seventy, a fifty thousand dollar savings. So we seem to be able to answer that question. And they said they'd start closing in twenty twenty-nine. Two years past the existence of the current contract. I'll come back to that in a minute. If Phase One cells are not going to be added to anymore, in other words, the elevation is gonna go up from the eleven seventy, then why aren't they being closed now? And at the reduced cost of a hundred and twenty-five versus a hundred and seventy? Why are we waiting another nine years to get this done? To me, that is illogical and makes no sense. Unless the hundred and twenty-five or the hundred and seventy-five are really not true numbers. They also state the closure to be spread out as follows in this new amended contract. Twelve point nine would be done by twenty twenty-five. Wait a minute, they just said twenty twenty-nine. Nope, it was twenty twenty-five, four years earlier. Eleven point six, twenty thirty-four. Oh, one year before they're done. Eight point six, twenty thirty-six, a year past when they're done. Eight point five at the end of the contract, December thirty-first, twenty thirty-eight. For a total of forty-one, six point six acres. And the final ten point three acres will not be closed according to that amended contract until nine months after the contract is done. Now, where the hell are they gonna be nine months after that contract's over? They gonna be hanging out over here on seventy-two, waiting to close that down? Or they gonna be long gone? Nice question. Post-closure responsibility isn't as obvious as, isn't it obvious that as long as Sand Tech is on site as their operator, that they shall maintain, shall, is the applicable word in the contract, maintain all of the cells whether or not they have been closed before them? In other words, anything that happens to those first forty-one acres in the next ten years, twenty years, any slide, and there's been one, I think that is a major one, or like the one that we had over at Papa Springs on the corner, is their responsibility, and it should be. They're the operator. It's written in the contract. Any expense associated with closure, post-closure, cost are theirs. No fans of us about it. It's straightforward and easy to read. And should we ever terminate that contract, as was suggested by people from Loudoun City before twenty twenty-seven, shouldn't they have complied with the original obligation of close as you go? In other words, old that forty-one, why aren't the ones that are filled right now closed? And paid for it? Post fee increase, this one is really good. I like this one. How is a point seven five percent? Got it? Point seven five percent, three quarters of that, eight percent, gonna generate three million dollars or more. When the gross revenue is only three million dollars, if you multiply that out, then we achieve twenty-two thousand five hundred a year. They're telling you. Oh, trust us, we're gonna give you a hundred and fifty thousand on top of what we give you today. Sorry, I had basic math and great school to figure this one out. It isn't true. Where's the other hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred a year gonna come from? I don't know, and that contract doesn't tell you. And when does that? Magnanimous, three quarters of a percent, take a fact. Is it in twenty twenty-one? And if so, a hundred and fifty K for fourteen years would be two point one million. Certainly not the six million that's been bannered about in the summary. You can find these numbers in there, I read them. They do not add. Never will, no how. And remember, folks, we own a hundred and twenty acres approximately, if it's a hundred and sixty, uh, next to it. It's the borrowed debt. Geosintech did a study back in two thousand and thirteen, which precluded, receded this contract amendment. And said they will borrow one point two million cubic yards of dirt. Think about that. One point two million cubic yards. It's fifty percent more dirt than you'll find on the other side of the Teleco Bridge going across the river when they built that all up. That was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is one point two million. That's gonna leave a hell of a big hole in that one twenty. I've stated that before. It's about sixty feet deep across that area of those acres. What do you do with that land when we're all set and done? Or is it the setup to continue to landfill for another thirty, forty, fifty years? And why the stated one fifty per year is supposed to pay for the one point one five million that we paid for that hundred and twenty acres? Well, if you're not getting it, how do you pay for it? And why is it only worth one point one million? When Geosintech said seven to nine dollars a cubic yard. Do the math, million times seven is seven million. All of that is covered, either the Geosintech report from July two thousand and thirteen, covered by state TCAs, and I could say it in the middle of the line. And this closer schedule that they're putting forth, which I read to you a little bit ago, twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-six, twenty thirty-eight, and nine months after that, doesn't follow what was in the original contract. Close as you go. And you wouldn't be facing a nine million dollar shortfall at the end of the either contract, the twenty-seven or thirty-eight. Also in that Geosintech, they had the CEO in there. The payment of the security fee shall not relieve the contractor of any of its obligations for closure, post-closure care under the agreement. Clearly stated, however, Sand Tech does not, will not, close any modules within Phase Two four. That's the ones leading up to the extra twelve you wanna put in place. Sand Tech indicated that the major permit modification would decrease the closure, post-closure cost per cubic yard basis. I'd like to see that, ma'am. The new cover system specified in the major permit modification will reduce the closure cost according to Sand Tech. Again, where's the map? Where's the chart? Where's the essentials that go into what is closure? And Sand Tech is willing to partner with the Solid Waste Commission to maximize airspace and minimize closure costs. What does maximize airspace mean? Ten seventy? Ten ninety-one? Or twelve? I don't know. This is a chart that I got from them, which is what a typical cell looks like. How deep you have to make it, how blind you have to have it, what kind of egress you need to have for water and leachants, and how you fill it as you come up to grade. It also shows what cover is. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars an acre, which is forty-four thousand square feet, is about three dollars a square foot for closure. What's included in that three dollars a square foot? I know there's a liner. I know there's topsoil. And I know there's vegetation. It just doesn't add. So my recommendation to you as a commission, and I would do the same for Loudoun City and North City, I wouldn't sign this addendum until after, number one, Republic takes over. Republic is the second largest waste management company in the country. My stepson worked for them for five years. He ran the waste system, he ran the landfill system. He left there, went to Advance, ran a transfer station, left there, went to Covanta up in Maryland, and ships sixty-five IQ rail cars a day out of Montgomery County, which is a greater Baltimore, Maryland, Washington DC area, Henry should be familiar with it. Sixty-five IQ rail cars a day, a hundred and twenty miles northwest to a cogeneration facility. So when the CEO or anybody tells you shipping waste more than fifty miles is not economically feasible, that's a bunch of hoover. They have a way, or they wouldn't be doing it. Republic will be a completely different animal for us to deal with. We have in this contract a hundred and fifty mile radius. Take a look at the state of Tennessee. Whoa, rectangle, right? Up in the northeast corner is Bristol. Directly south of us is Chattanooga. To our west is Nashville. So if you got a hundred and fifty mile radius, how far does that extend below Chattanooga? About forty, fifty, sixty, seventy miles into Georgia. The stated purpose of Republic buying it was to bring planet trash here. Now, the contract says, folks, we're only gonna have Tennessee trash. I submit to you that if you've got a waste hauling contract down in Chattanooga or in Bristol, remember Bristol is two places, Tennessee and Virginia. Chattanooga sits right on the Georgia border. You're a waste hauler down there, are you gonna separate Georgia and Tennessee trash? You gonna separate Virginia and Tennessee trash? That hundred and eighty, fifty mile radius is severely truncated on the south and on the west and on the north. Over towards the east or the west, you go past, all the way out to Nashville. There's things stated in that amendment that leave me cold. And I've negotiated a lot of contracts in my thirty-one years at Ford. I would never sign a contract that has all of these glaring holes in it that leave you stone cold with to interpretation, which is exactly what they've done for the last fourteen years. But it's up to you.
Richard, these are, um, all these things are gonna be addressed at workshop too, cause we're not, we're not making any kind of vote tonight.
I know that.
Okay, we're gonna talk about it again at workshop, too.
Well, I'm really interested in two things. Some of you weren't there, so you didn't get the first hand. Now, there is a video, it takes an hour and forty-some odd minutes to watch it.
Were you there? Were you there?
I.
Were you there?
No.
To me. No.
I didn't think I saw you.
No, I watched the video last night and this morning. I watched you speak, I watched Coes speak, Henry said a few words. Mr. Duff didn't say anything except one thing. Mr. Mears said a few. Kelly, of course, was up on the dais, because she's at Solid Waste too. The two people that sat over here, Ben Johnson and his boss, when the folks from Loudoun started talking about, well, maybe we'd like to run it, like they used to. The CEO was sitting there shaking his head, no, 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 just could feel the money's flying out of his pocket. He refinanced Sand Tech, and Sand Tech is not here, Chattanooga, they're in eight states. It's a fairly good sized company. He refinanced over two hundred and fifty million dollars in the last three years. So you tell me how much he's getting for this?
He cleared a hundred, the last things I saw off the internet, he cleared a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, I believe, in the first quarter of last year. That's all that I could find on the internet currently. But you look at Republic, Republic is a six point two billion dollar industry. I brought that out.
I remember you bringing it up, and you asked some pretty good questions about, what is the profit here?
I've got some more.
The CEO said the max they got was two point four million.
It went up to three.
Not very much profit.
Well, the first, it started out lower, now I'm sitting back there, he said it was barely two million. You know, and then, then it went up a little bit to the half, then we were close. Then we were close to three before the meeting was over. But, you know, when we questioned about that, he said, well, we did, we hardly, barely made two million dollars, you know, a profit off of the landfill. But like I said, that kind of crept up the more times we asked questions.
I've said this before, go over to Loudoun landfill, I like that. Count knows this. You'd be hard pressed to find ten people. Now, you've got backup people down at the court. The woman that comes and prepares all the reports. You've got a bookkeeper that's entering all the tickets, creating the charts and graphs. But let's say you've got ten people and you're paying them a hundred grand a year. That's a million. Where's the other two million go? Don't tell me depreciation on a quit. Don't tell me depreciation on building, because there isn't any. Don't tell me that a wheel wash that goes four hundred thousand and we're supposed to pay half of it, right Kelly?
We're not.
We're not. But if you read the language in there, they're using that or a suggestion that we pave the outside from that wheel wash so we don't grab all the dust and dirt after you do the wheel wash and drag it back out on the road as an alternative to the bond. I don't know. I'm, I'm sorry, I it's, it's really strange to sit on the sidelines, knowing what I know in contract and read this thing, go, I have more questions than I have answers. And I'm not being critical, Kelly. I think you and the guys that were there tried your damnedest. But you sure seem to be getting out clocked.
Here's, this is, this Solid Waste Commission, again, puts us at the mercy of the state. Just like a couple of other things, you know, the state said we, you know, you have to set one up. And once you do, guess who has total control over contracts and everything else with solid waste? Because we don't.
I know.
The Solid Waste Commission is, is the one that
But I think, Coach, you brought it up in the meeting, or maybe it was land. The real stakeholders in this, me, Pat, the rest of us taxpayers in the county. Because if all of this falls apart, goes to hell in a handbasket. And we own about six or seven million dollars. Whether we've got a guarantee through the state or not, or a bond through them or not.
Well, here's what bothers, here's what bothers me about Republic. If they end up with it and being the number two in the country is the fact that, you know, we have a contract, but there's, like I said, how much they, how many billions of dollars they generate? Thing is, is if they want to, they can ignore any part of the contract. And like I said, they'll outlaw you any day of the week. They'll, they'll spend those billions of dollars. And like I said, they, you know, if, well, you're bringing in trash that's more than a hundred and fifty miles. Ah, so what? You know, that's what, you know, those things, when you surrender control of what goes on in your county to people outside of, I don't think they would have Loudoun County's best interest at heart. It, it, it is a business and their business is to make as much money as they can.
Right.
And like I said, when we, when they sell and we've got a huge company that runs it, that runs it, I don't know that there'll be anything to do that you can make them honor it. They can say, well, sue us. And then we're sitting here, do we want to spend taxpayers' money paying lawyers to go to court over something that we'd never be able to win? I, I, you know, I'm likely, there are more questions about it than, than whatever, but
And we're going to have another chance to talk about.
We really are going to have a long conversation. This is the workshop.
The workshop will be October nineteenth.
And that's, I mean, this is going to be covered at Leaver.
Thank you, Richard.
Remember everything you said tonight, because you're going to get said again. You've used up the time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring out a point. With a six point two billion dollar industry, their shares were at ninety-four dollars week before last. In oh eight, I believe that Republic bought Alliance. It made them at that time the second, and with the merger of SandTech, or, and I'm not making accusations, I'm looking at big business. Are they going to make that a bargaining tool to make that company really ideal for waste management to come in and buy so more people can make money?
Sure. That's what Sand Tech asked the president in that meeting about tipping fees. And he takes his yard, his tree limb somewhere else. We've asked for years to put in a settlement. T-Dax approved that settlement. SandTech has never wanted to do it. Why are they setting the fees when the contract says we set them? But we've done it for ten years. So you've got past practice that's going to get away. And if you go after them, they'll stuff that right up your ear. Because past practice in a contract violates contracts.
One question I have, Mr. Chairman. If Republic takes over SandTech, can we give all of our legal responsibilities to Republic? And Steve, how much money would that make us a year that Mr. Stevens is making right now currently?
Say again?
If Republic does take over SandTech, would they be agreeable to have a furniture lawyer and they take care of all of our legal responsibilities? We don't have to have Mr. Stevens anymore. How much money would that save us that we could put in our kitty each year?
The only part of that that I could answer is we're paying Kevin twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so he's on retainer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, here's the bottom line. Kelly's going to bring that to the workshop on October nineteenth at six PM. And we can continue at length the discussion. Will you put that on your calendar? I have your notes. All right. Pat Hunter, tell me what's on your mind.
I'll try to read briefly. Uh, my name is Pat Hunter, and I have two concerns that are on your agenda. Uh, one has to do with Commissioner Van Shaver, the removing of the workhouse designation of Loudoun County Jail. And I hope the commission votes to do this because we do not have a workshop, I mean, a workhouse. And the only thing that I can see in having this, um, well, it's not, it's not designated, but as such, the only thing that I can see is that it artificially raises the salaries of the sheriff, which then the county mayor's salary has to be higher than that. So that's the only thing. And it's nothing personal. This has been going on for years, but I, it, it's incorrect. And my commission actually addressing this issue and putting it to rest, perhaps when we have a new sheriff, we're going to start off with a new slate. So I think the state is very generous when they set the salaries of all our elected officials. So to give more than that is, in my opinion, too generous. I too have concerns with regards to the, um, to the proposed, um, extensions. First of all, I'm very disappointed that the Solid Waste Commission did not post the September twenty-ninth stakeholder governmental meeting and supporting documents, the packets to the, or packet to the Loudoun County government website. I think that whenever a meeting is held by any committee, uh, commission, that the information should be out there because not only are the stakeholders, the governmental bodies stakeholders, but so is the community. And I think that was the only person from the community that, that came. And the only reason I know about it was because I had missed the previous meeting, but I had asked Mr. Anklund to record it and I watched it. I don't get the news herald, so I would not have known. So, um, like I said, that's disappointing. We have people living next to the landfill. And really, I think that they should receive a written notice from the Solid Waste Commission apprising them of the proposed contract and any future public meetings, including a public hearing with the public of all the property owners in close proximity. There's a gated community, Tennessee National. They're in the top ten tax base at Loudoun. How will the proposed contract extension, expansion impact future growth and development there? Does anyone care? I hope so. I care. You know, I think there, there's some frustration that nothing can be done because of this interlocal agreement. And I'm going to disagree. And I hope that this commission and the county mayor and the county attorney get involved in this issue. Because the interlocal agreement that created the Solid Waste Commission, which says the establishment of the commission, it defines five county, um, appointees, one city of Loudoun and one city of Nor City. It also specifies that, um, the purpose and authority of the commission, that's a solid waste commission, shall have the power, authority, and responsibility for, number two, the raising or lowering of tip fees or other charges that might be assessed for the use of the landfill. This is the authority of the Solid Waste Commission. But under the two thousand seven contract that was crafted by Mr. Field, he was the chief negotiator. We have one other member that's still there on the commission, Mr. Watkins. That was transferred to SandTech under the provision of ten point three. They are now in charge of raising or lowering the tipping fees. And that's not right. The interlocal agreement says it's the Solid Waste Commission. And if they wanted to deviate from this, they should have come to the three governmental bodies and requested a change in the interlocal agreement. They did not do that. They simply bypassed the governmental, uh, bodies and did it on their own. The other provision that they are violating under item number seven, annual budget. I've been going to meetings for years. I've never seen an annual budget. Number seven, annual budget. The operator at SandTech shall prepare a proposed annual budget for presentation to an approval of the Solid Waste Disposal Commission. The budget for the preceding year shall be a continuing document into the subsequent fiscal year until a new budget is adopted. I've never seen a budget. Each year, the budget committee meets to go over every single budget.
Would they consider that proprietary information and not available to the public?
I would hope not, but, you know, if we can't get packets, maybe it is.
Well, I, you see, that I heard you, Van, but then you had it. You know, it just, it bothers me when we appoint people to look after the interests of the folks in Loudoun County and they get it backwards. You know, it's not our responsibility to make sure that SandTech makes money off of us or makes money off selling their company. You know, I mean, it, it's backwards. And to me, some of this going on, it seems like the folks in Loudoun County got put on the back burner while we were walking on eggshells to make sure nobody knew what was going on so that top dollar could be made. But, you know, it, it bothers me. I'm glad you brought that up. Now I feel better, Van. Okay, that'll be a subject of conversation on the nineteenth at the workshop.
Well, I hope that the county commission would ask the county attorney to look at the interlocal agreement because it is being violated. And, um, you know, it doesn't hurt to look at that and see what can be done.
They just ignore it.
The other concern that I have is, um, the request for proposal back in two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand, through two thousand seven, the, uh, the attorney back then, Brett Gilbert, same law firm, advised the Solid Waste Commission to adhere to the RFP process and follow the nineteen fifty-seven purchasing law. Every department in local government has to follow the purchasing law. Lenore City has to do it. Not the fifty-seven, but they have to go by their appropriate purchasing law. So does Loudoun City. Why is the Solid Waste Commission now, another attorney with the same firm, is advising that it wasn't necessary? Now, it's going to result in millions of dollars in revenue. How do we know that we couldn't do better with another company? Look at Knoxville. They just did a great deal with their competitor. So, and I have concerns with, with the current attorney.
You're talking about taking bids.
Taking bids, right. Request for proposal.
And I think that we address that too, that we're extending the contract. We're not putting out a bid, a bid. We're amending the contract.
I understand that, but I also think that we're talking about millions, millions of dollars in amending the contract. And how do we know that someone else couldn't or, or perhaps would do a better job of, or a more equitable job of, um, of giving the Solid Waste Commission, which is us,
But I don't think we're in violation because we're amending the contract and we're not putting out bids.
Well, I, I'd like for the county attorney to address that issue as well because I know that the Solid Waste Attorney, Mr. Stevens, he gave his explanation. But I'd like to remind this commission that he is the same attorney that advised the Telco Village Property Owners Association when it came to the POA lots, the delinquent lots. He had to recuse himself because of conflict of interest, but they lost that lawsuit because he wasn't right. The other thing is, he also advised three commissioners or the Telco Village group that they could meet with at least three commissioners and discuss issues and concerns, and it wouldn't violate the sunshine law. Your county attorney said otherwise. So I don't think it would hurt to ask the county attorney to look at this issue as well.
Pat, I think that Mr. Stevens, after I gave him several emails in section eight, one hundred through one oh eight, he should be very aware of violation of the sunshine laws.
Well,
If he's not, I wouldn't use him for an attorney. I can say that right now because we'd have a lawsuit.
My, my point is that he has made, he has given advice that even you would not use, so.
I wouldn't use him to buy a car.
Well, I don't know how else to say it.
And Pat, I gave him copies of the sunshine law. And I gave him the copy of the ruling from Bob Bowman, so.
Uh, I have made a records request. It should have been in the desk of, on the desk of Mr. Field with regards to looking at different records, which also includes how they got to the hundred and fifty thousand annually. I personally think that whenever you're involved in any type of negotiation, that all the supporting documentation should be in the records depository. In this particular case, in the county mayor's office or county, uh, office building. And since I haven't received that information, I'm assuming, who knows where it is. But I want to see the calculations and also I want to see the tonnage, the repose fees to achieve the hundred and fifty thousand annually. All I can think of is that in two thousand seven, when, um, the Solid Waste Commission was about to, award the contract to, uh, SandTech, they wrote a letter and I'll be glad to send it to everybody. they wrote a letter and I'll be glad to send it to everybody. And in their letter, they spoke about, you know, on the average, they were going to give the Solid Waste Commission $450,000. I asked why that didn't come to fruition and I was told that it was not written into the contract. If you multiply 450,000 times 20 years, we'd have 9 million. So I think that there were lots of things that went awry in 2007. I am concerned by this contract. And I think there are lots of problems. And I'm not sure we're going to get a good deal, especially with a company that we don't know anything about. Like I said, I think that there's a huge issue with the interlocal agreement. And I hope you look at that because that was the basis or a contract that has cost us a fortune in many ways. But I don't like the fact that the community is being excluded from this and the fact that you have Tennessee National. And I doubt that they even knew about the stakeholders meeting.
I'm sure Tennessee National knew it because Ty Ross knew it and he lives in Tennessee National, so...
Well, I remember seeing letters going out to everybody, to everybody near the woods near the landfill. You know, you did it back many years ago when it came to a water line. This is pretty significant. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. That'll be on the agenda on October 19th at the workshop. Buddy, do you want to give Bob Bowman a call? Okay, and I'm going to ask Steve Fields. Will you be there on the 19th?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Steve, has Kevin addressing those and getting those documents to Pat?
I haven't seen her request, but we'll be happy to accommodate her request when I see it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to ask a favor. Can Jim Jenkins go ahead and do his part? Let's get him on the road.
He won't let me drive the rest of them.
Come on, I can make exceptions. Come on up.
I'll make a motion that we forego the second reading.
I'm going to make a motion. No, yours is first.
Okay, we'll consider number one, under zoning regulations, dealing with 411.
The property in District Three has changed hands. Mr. Hyde now is the owner of that property and plus a little bit more. And he plans on being a full-time farmer and wants the zone to go back to A...
A1.
A1?
A2.
A2. And I recommend that we do that. Okay.
We got a motion?
I'll second his motion.
We've got a motion and a second on number one, the 411 property. Any further comments? Call the roll on that one, Tammy.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Aye.
Tinker?
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Depp?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller? Rooster?
Aye.
You should have six.
You got eight.
Eight.
Eight. Okay, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion. We approve the acceptance of the roads in Stone Crossing subdivision as listed on the recommendation. The road superintendent approved them. And Jim Jenkins brought them to us. I'll make a motion. We approve.
Hey, we have a second. We got a motion and a second on the fifth district roads. Any further discussion? Okay, Tammy, call the roll.
Hurley?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Depp?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Rooster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
That one passed. Okay, thank you, Jim. Safe trip.
All the rest of our traffic should be gone now, Jim.
Okay. All right. Mayor Buddy Bradshaw, tell us about your items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody has a map inside their packet there. I talked to Mr. Scott today. He's aware of what's going on. He's also aware that there'll be some pricing. He has to bid and eventually get it. I don't think he'll bid against it, but he does know the beginning bid will be whatever it costs us to survey it out. You can see on the map. I mean, there's not a whole lot the county can do with it. He's shown interest and interest in improving that piece of property.
With the Greenback Convenience Center.
Yeah.
We're not going to spend any money on anything, are we?
Well, we would survey it.
What if we spend $8,000 on a survey and we get $1,200 back on it? That's not a good deal for us.
We will spend that.
Oh, it is. It's where the railroad used to lay.
I understand that, but the survey at the county building, whenever we had, when they did the addition to it, was $6,800. And it was four points and been surveyed six months, a year and a half before that. A survey of that piece of property will be several thousand dollars.
I'll be able to get some prices and bring it back.
Well, I don't want to, I mean, if he wants it, I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
Well, and he understands that he has to pay whatever our survey costs.
Well, that'd have to be the minimum bid then.
Well, what about if contingent, uh, get a price, man says you get a price and I tell him that's what it is and he says go for it, after.
Well, but it's got to go to bid. It's got to declare surplus. It'll have to go to bid. When it goes to bid, we can set a minimum price, right, Susan? So the minimum price would have to be at least whatever we would wind up spending on if we spend any money on it.
Yeah, that's clear from the get-go. You pay whatever the survey cost is. That's the minimum bid.
But now other people can bid.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
No guarantee.
Do you need us to declare surplus or anything than that?
I just want, uh, let's, this commission go ahead and do the survey. That'll start us.
Somebody will want those 15 old pine trees.
I'll entertain a motion if you want to do the survey on the Greenback Convenience Center property.
And send it on to the surplus property committee.
And send it on the surplus property.
To spend it or to get a cost? What are we saying here?
To do the...
To spend the money on a survey?
Yes, send it to surplus property authority with the minimum bid being what we have into the survey.
If you were to get, uh, not a bid, but if you were to get a, somebody tell you the price on a survey and it was really, really way off the bat, you would probably say, hang on, whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay.
Yeah.
So you're going to get a quote?
I can send it out before we go forward.
Oh, I'll just ask them if that's your intention or not your intention.
I'd get a quote and then ask Donnie if that's, you know...
I haven't done a survey in 20 years.
Because the only reason to do this is to sell it. I mean, to get rid, I mean, prove it.
It's a good square piece. It's marked too, so hopefully it won't be that bad. I'll tell you what, I'll send it out when I do get it before we move forward. Once we get a quote, I'll make sure there's any objections and...
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
And while we're talking about the Greenback Convenience Center for the next workshop, a discussion on out-of-county residents bringing in solid waste.
You for it or against it?
Uh, probably against it.
Bring in, bring in what?
Bringing in out-of-county waste to the Greenback Convenience Center. I just know that we have to pay, you know, every time, every pound we take to the dump.
You think it's that bad over there? Well, we'll discuss. Have it on the workshop, Jim.
I think so. And like I said, maybe some of it, not intentionally, but like I said, Greenback encompasses a lot of people that in Blount and Monroe County that live in the Greenback community and they, you know, take advantage of it.
Have you talked to Chris? Have you talked to Chris Parks?
Uh, have a little bit. I plan on talking to him and asking him if he'll come, him or Donnie, or Ronnie rather, to the workshop. And, because I've talked to both of them about it before. I just know I was a good way up Morton Road the other day and somebody was heading our way with a dump truck, or I mean, a pickup truck and a trailer full of old carpet and stuff heading to Greenback Community to our convenience center there. So, yeah, we, you know, if it didn't cost us anything, it'd be different. But every pound that we take to the landfill, the accountant has to pay.
Blame the old landfill people?
I think we would.
Commissioner Satterfield, we just added that to the agenda for the workshop.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay.
So we're not making a motion on this one, correct?
Well, Gary did a motion.
That's what I thought.
You going to withdraw it?
What do you want?
I was going to say, are we not going to move forward on, you getting a quote for the...
No.
Who's going to send this to you? If somebody from Greenback is saying that, we can be done with this.
Oh, I thought you all had done, I will second that, yes.
Okay.
Survey it. As long as Mr. Scott passes it, then we'll move on and send it on to surplus property authority.
Fair enough.
If it's something outrageous number, I'll let everybody know.
If AAA survey company says, I'm going to charge you $500 and he said good, then we're go.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Since this is going to involve money, call the roll.
We'll get Simpson to survey it. He's an engineer.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Depp?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Rooster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Okay.
Eddie's, Eddie, Mr. Simpson, an engineer. He could survey it for us, couldn't he?
That's due from a surveyor.
He's a surveyor.
That's different from a surveyor.
We could do that. Hey, Ray.
The jail, as you all know, our jail comes out onto, uh, Bratton Bratton School, I guess, still. Right there, Crick, especially if you're trying to go left or north onto Highway 11. The people that lived the property adjacent to the jail have come off it. It was originally $30,000 they wanted, if I'm right.
Twenty, twenty-seven thousand. Got you almost there.
So, and they've come down to 10 now. It's probably still a ton high as far as property values go. They've also lost their view. They had a beautiful view. Now they've got a view of a razor fence. It also includes the removal. We also have to agree to remove a tree. If you go by there on 11, you can see that tree is as dead as a door nail. We don't move it. We're going to do thousands of dollars worth of fence anyway. But for $10,000 reserve grants along with the tree removal, and that would allow us to fix it, turn it to a 90 degree. Am I right with that, Eddie? Turn it into a 90-degree angle instead of this.
Yes, we would have a legal turn then coming off of Bratton School Road onto Highway 11.
Are you going to be able to do that? The highway department be able to do that or we're going to...
Yeah, I've committed to do that. I work with the state. We'll get everything, everything done at cost. I haven't done a projected cost on it, but I'm estimating it to be around $100,000. We've got to do about 800 foot of asphalt on Highway 11. No striping at all.
They're going to require a turn lane? State going to require a turn lane?
They'll require a turn lane coming toward Little City, yes.
It costs more to get into jail now than it used to.
Now, once we have the opportunity to get some TPO money with that, of course, having pushed the project down, we wouldn't go ahead and acquire the property. Would that be an opportunity, you think?
We could try to do that, but to be honest with you, I think it would tie it up probably for three or four years to get it done. And I think it needs to be done.
My concern on Buddy's email was that exactly. What's actually cost? We don't know. We're looking at quarter million dollar project when it's all said and done. $10,000 and we looked at the first map we saw, everything we needed was either state right-of-way or county right-of-way. So we're essentially paying $10,000 for right-of-way. Plus, we're going to take care of somebody's firewood for the next two or three seasons, sounds like. I don't want to pay the people for anything. If it's right-of-way, if it's deemed right-of-way, we have the right to it and the state has the right to it.
But now, I gave you, I gave you all the map, or I know, I gave Buddy one. There's one wedge there. It is not right-of-way that we've got to cross. And that wedge is theirs. It's about a tenth of an acre that we've got to cross and...
Well, that's $100,000 an acre for a piece of property then.
Painted suffering.
Yeah, painted suffering. I can't, I can't get, and we're going to get the 100, 150, whatever it costs to actually build a road. Where's that coming from?
Well, that's a, that's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question. Real good question.
Well, until we acquire the property, I mean, that's to be answered after. Now, and that's it. It's a tenth of an acre to acquire it in effect. Bratton School Road is going to be, I don't know how much shorter than it will. Hmm, probably. It'll actually end almost at the corner of the property right there.
But it'll turn Bratton School to the left to go on to at a 90-degree angle, so. And that's what the state's going to require this. I have a drawing here, but I don't have any copies. But I do have a drawing of the state's approved turn lanes and everything in that vicinity right there.
And depending on the rush we're in, once we acquire the property, we can apply for TPO funding and see if it comes through. But that's going to also be two, three years down the road.
And what precipitated this? We knew that intersection was there when we built the jail. It's been there for 200 years. Why now all of a sudden we need to spend this kind of money to straighten out a two-foot piece of road?
Nothing. Just the concern of emergency vehicles trying to come out of there all night. But that's a, you look, your point is...
Well, there shouldn't be many emergency vehicles coming in and out of there. That's where they send people to jail.
Pretty shallow it's going to be.
But I mean, they shouldn't be coming out like in an emergency of any kind.
Uh, ten meters.
Is there any other options, Eddie, on that? Is there anything else that we can have them come and take a look at it that might be feasible than $100,000?
Honestly, I don't think there's any alternative to do it this way, to do it this way. And David Matlock, he was assisted, he assisted me in doing a sketch on how we would like to do it and the state approved that. But I don't think the other way. The problem is, as you come down Bratton School Road, is to turn left, okay? But you got to do that after you come from Lenore City and make a sharp right. But you've got to jackknife that truck if they deliver groceries. They've got to jackknife that truck to get in there and pull back up on 11. There's no other way to get in there.
I was going to add, that's the gate to delivery trucks and everything come through too?
Yes, sir.
If it makes somebody more comfortable, let's do it at the workshop. We've talked about this once, but that's been a year or so ago.
Tracy is there.
I like to have real numbers. I mean, I appreciate Eddie's kind of guesstimate, but I'm sure we can get hard or fast numbers of some kind, can't we?
We can try to get somebody to come and do a estimate or a bid on it. Yeah, we could do that.
That would, that would go a long way because $100,000, we've all been this long enough to know that $100,000 doesn't go a long way when the government's involved in it, especially when we're dealing with a state highway. I mean, who knows what else we're going to run into? There'll be drainage issue. We know. We've all been through this. So, boy, to know what the big picture cost is and then weigh that against whether or not making a little curve in the road is worth a quarter million dollars or not, I don't know.
Tracy, is there any, and maybe you could get those numbers for us before the workshop? If there's going to be any contingency money left out of the jail.
There ain't no contingency money. It's all...
United on capital projects. That's not...
I see where it is. I think the pushing thing now is if we can get a survey of it and know what's there to know what the state's going to have something to look at, I'd like to, and the bidders to know what can be done or what shouldn't be done. But that's up to you.
Mr. Mayor, did I understand you want to take us to the workshop now?
Give us more details. Give us some hard, fat numbers of some kind between now and then. We, we're already setting for a long workshop, so we might as well make it a little longer, but... Yeah, we've guessed things too many times this body has over the years and we've guessed wrong a lot. Poplar Springs, I wouldn't bring that up. That was $40,000 to fix that.
We're not allowed to say that word.
I know. I'm sorry. I take it back.
That's fine. There, we're, actually, we're, everything going in. We're going to do it tonight.
So we're going to look at getting a survey on it?
I have ordered a survey and I can cancel it if it's not already done, but I have contacted...
Paid for by?
County.
What?
County.
Of the county.
From where?
Well, I don't know where, but I was asked to get a survey on it, so I have called and asked for a survey.
Well, I mean, the money has to go from somewhere, Tracy Blair.
We'll meet that on October 19th at 4:00.
It may be surveyed by them.
Yeah, and jail construction.
So it's going to be paid out of jail construction.
If you're going to need a survey.
We're going to have to have a survey. I mean, we can meet at the workshop, but without a survey, we're still talking in the dark.
Yeah, because you're going to need it for hard numbers.
And you could look at condemning it. I'm not a big fan of condemning property.
I think we did away with eminent domain quite a few number of years ago.
You got to have two-thirds majority to do eminent domain in this body.
But did we not do away with that totally?
Only, only with a two-thirds, uh, two-thirds majority and only for government use. This would fall under it. That was back in the day when they were condemning private property and giving it to private developers and stuff. So, yes, we were there for that. Supreme Court actually did it. It was a big deal 10, 12 years ago.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I say that the difference, tell the commission the difference between when we did the building that Tracy is in currently... There was a lot of drainage issues that had to be dealt with that. They actually came and ended it to make sure the elevations were all right. They came back several times to do that type work. This is only a meets and bounds survey.
The meets and bounds survey, we had to have on the entire county building property. I'm not talking about the building. We had to have the meets and bounds survey, under state law, we had to do it. I pitched a fit eight different ways, and it was sixty-eight hundred dollars. And we had just had it done a year and a half before.
And that, and that's good, I'm not arguing that part, but that's the difference, because I talked to Jim today, and he says it does not have to go before the planning commission or anything. We're actually just adding that sixth of an acre, six tenths of an acre, whatever it is, to, to that intersection. And he said, you know, I can prove that in the house with no, uh, no dealing with the state or anything, so. You know, but that's...
Workshop, definitely.
So, are you saying we don't need a survey, or what are you saying?
I'm saying you do need a survey, but it's not an elaborate survey like...
Okay, that's what I was trying to get across, yeah.
Greenback was where we talked about survey. That will be exactly like County Office Bill. This one, I don't know nothing about a survey, it's state right of way, and it's a tiny little place, I wouldn't think it would be an enormous amount of money. But if we touch it, if government touches it, it's, it's always more than if it was just Joe Citizen out there doing it.
Well, I still think we need a survey on it too. If you want meat, if you want meat to those numbers, you need a survey on it.
Basically, we need to know exactly what is right of way and exactly what we're buying.
The very first map we had was all right of way. Now, I don't know if it's gotten bigger since then or moved to what it was, but the little bit we needed on that pile there...
It was not all right of way.
Uh-uh.
The first thing we saw was.
No.
Well, not the one I did, because...
I don't know who did it. I don't have a clue who did it.
'Cause there was a wedge that wasn't, yeah.
The wedge is, is probably on, and, and this wedge is just a little longer than the other one. I'm guessing, and I shouldn't be putting numbers out there, I know, but I, I'm guessing maybe six to, six hundred to a thousand dollars to give for him to do that. Because what we need to do is, where the, the fence comes up to their property, I want it to come straight on across the wedge and take it to the Highway 11. And that gives us plenty of room for the bikes and, and all that for the slot.
And Mayor, you're saying that tree needs to be taken down, 'cause if it falls, it'll fall on the new jail fence?
And it's, uh, it's, this is not even involved in the wedge, it's way on up the hill from the wedge.
Yeah, but if it's already dead, we certainly don't need to be paying for a new fence.
I mean, and it's for me to, this curtain off the fence too.
Do we need a motion to proceed with the survey, or? I guess...
She, she says she got it ordered.
Okay.
Gonna pay for a lot of jail funds.
That'll be, and we'll have, hopefully, we'll have some good hard numbers from workshop, or harder numbers anyway.
Okay.
Did you say the tree is on their property, but it's up against, close to our fence?
And that was part of the deal for them selling?
I think you leave it alone, if, if it's ordered, I think you leave it alone.
It's not been completed yet, but it has been ordered, but I can hardly cancel it.
Is that something that we could at least, I know we had a dead tree over, close to our place, that's close, that was close to the senior citizen center, and Brian Brown came over there and had somebody take it out. Is that a tree that we could go ahead and have taken out before it falls?
I, I can take that out too, with a directive from, uh...
I feel more comfortable with Eddie's guys and...
Yeah, we, we can take it down, I just need the directive from the mayor.
Was that something that we could go ahead before it falls in and...
For the sound that says firewood promise, do not bother.
Or, or do they want some wood taped?
He'll have it cut up and all.
I think we just damn it. I don't know, well, they, they just wanted to stack the wood up right there next to the tree.
I just said something in his email about they wanted the wood or something. I figure we'd have to chop it up in cordwood and stack it and get it to be a firewood.
Drop the tree and be done with it.
So, can we get a directive maybe from you to? Can we get a directive?
I mean, you know, when this all happened, they, they were upset, but they were pretty good about it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and, and a good face too would be to go ahead and get that tree out of the way.
It still has its leaves on it, so it's not gonna involve the dollars. It still has the last church leaves on it.
Well, why is it dead, I mean, who said it's dead?
It's dead. But the dead leaves are still hanging there, man.
The dead leaves.
Yeah.
Good for score, dead leaves.
It's dead.
Dead leaves.
I had a year of botting in college, I'll go check it out.
I guarantee you, we, something we did.
Check that pulse on that tree.
So, we're not gonna vote on buying the property tonight?
No, it's going to the workshop.
All right, number three on the line, and I will be quiet, is the seventeen thousand dollar Homeland Security EMA grant, it's no match.
Make mostly approved seventy thousand dollar no match grant.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the Homeland Security grant?
Where's that?
We added it?
Just more.
Okay.
Yes, more.
Any further discussion?
That's when Van had you distracted down there.
Any further discussion? Can we call the roll?
Oh, gee.
Money.
Uh, Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Motion passed.
So, ahead, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and...
Thank you.
As a matter of note, President Trump, his left Walker Reed is in the wild.
They better did twenty years ago.
Susan Husky, tell me about your man a retiree insurance renewal.
It's good.
It's great.
Isn't it Susan? I said, it's good, you couldn't be?
I'm just thankful it's there. Request approval of the retirees' insurance, it was a decrease of thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents per, uh, employee per month.
I make a motion that we accept.
Second on the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
It's not often you get a reduction in insurance.
No, not at all. Any further comments? Okay, that's involving money, so we gotta call the roll.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver. Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye. Feel like Mike Leach now Mississippi State.
Just gonna say aye.
Should we ask Van when he comes back, yes or no? We've got seven, keep rolling. Okay. Kelly Middleton Brewster.
Um, like I kinda said at the beginning, I'll keep this really short. We do wanna come back at the workshop and talk about the amendment and the, and the contract. So, I want everybody to be prepared. We are asking that, uh, that the commission give us support or some kind of letter stating, um, our intentions to, if we are supportive of the amendment, or if we are not supportive. I will tell you that, um, I have had some word that Loudoun City is in the process of looking into possibly, uh, taking the landfill over themselves. So, they're doing some due diligence and doing some research about writing the contract out and then taking control of the landfill. So, be sure to look over your things. We'll be at the workshop, and we can answer some more questions. Richard, if you'll shoot me an email about some of your questions, I'll go ahead and get those on the ball too.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if y'all heard me or not, I, I voted on that humanity thing, I mean, I voted aye.
Uh, yeah, we heard it.
Okay.
That was a good impersonation. Kelly, she sounded just like me.
Okay. All right, next up, that'll be on the agenda for the workshop. Commissioner Shaver.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, four ways, uh, stop, I talked to Eddie about this, uh, a couple of months ago now. Talked to a couple of law enforcement, talked to some folks that live in the area, and I'll tell you, couldn't come at a better time. Since I closed Simpson Road, the traffic out there has quadrupled now. I mean, it is scary coming through there. Uh, this is only a vote to, to say to Eddie, yes, we'd like to have a four-way stop. It's a two-way now, set up at the intersection of Town Creek and Shawberry. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Okay, we got a motion to put the four-way stop sign to refer to Eddie Simpson, the highway superintendent. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, if it's okay. Eddie, you, you for this?
It is okay, uh, commission, uh, I wouldn't do it through the, uh, highway department, because we have a policy that we do not put stop signs on the through streets. So, I told Van, you know, the only way I feel comfortable doing it without changing, our policy in getting in trouble there is to have county commission to direct us to do it, and then we'll do it. That way, you're getting to take the flag if you get a lot of calls.
I think we'll get a lot of happy calls, is what I think.
And that's good if you do.
Boy, it's, it's gotten...
Has a roundabout been considered instead of stops?
It takes a lot of land, uh, it probably would be a good place to put a, a roundabout, but it would take a lot of land right there to do it.
Yeah.
You know, it takes, it takes about a hundred and twenty foot circle.
I got hung up on one of them things over the weekend, like I never got one.
So, does that a second directive?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to refer the four-way stop sign to Eddie Simpson and the highway department. Any further discussions?
Put a little sign there, it says, by order of county commission.
Van Shaver?
Yes.
Van Shaver.
Call it Van Shaver Stop.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
Uh, Eddie, as we talked before, when you do do it, being new, something on either end of Town Creek to say like, new stop sign or something like that.
We'll, we'll put a stop sign prior to...
Yeah, yeah.
With the thing ahead, stop ahead.
Yeah, that, that temporarily anyhow.
There'll be tire marks all the way through that intersection.
I'm telling you, man, I come through twice a day, and both times, it, the, going up the hill there on, on Shawberry, it was backed up all the way up that hill right there. It's, it's hairy now that Simpson Road's closed, so much more traffic coming through there. All right.
Motion passed.
Uh, my second, Mr. Chairman, it's been discussed and discussed, it's removing the designation of the workhouse on the jail that's been there since nineteen seventy-two, I think it was, I'll put that in form of a motion.
Okay, we got a motion to remove the workhouse designation.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we got one no. Okay, that motion passed. Okay.
It's all mine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Tracy Blair, tell us about the budget amendments.
Thank you, sir. The first item on the agenda is consideration of recommendation to approve application and acceptance of four fourteen thousand four hundred ten dollar EPL grant. This is part of the CARES, uh, program, is for coronavirus relief for the senior center. The budget committee recommends...
Mr. Chairman, that's a matter of the budget committee, been discussed at the workshop, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second on the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, there's money involved, we gotta call the roll.
Colin.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Second item is consideration of recommendation to approve application and acceptance of five thousand dollar high disability enforcement of Tennessee traffic safety laws, there are no matching funds.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second.
Is that Satterfield?
That's Satterfield. Any further discussion? Okay, again, there's money involved, call the roll.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Brewster. Aye. Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye. Is Adam still sick? Yes.
He, he was here last month, yeah, he's out sick tonight. I told him he's got the corona, he said no.
Unfortunate.
The next item is consideration of recommendation to approve application and acceptance of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollar EMPG grant. This is the grant that offsets the expenses of the EMA operating budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve that grant.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the EMPG grant for Homeland Security. Any further discussion? Again, there's money involved, call the roll.
Shaver.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
The next item is consideration of recommendation to restore requested appropriations for equipment, um, budgets in the operating budgets. Um, commission will recall that during preparation of the current year budget, we received notification that the state would have to provide a grant, and it was to be specifically utilized for capital purchases. Now, those requirements have been removed. However, the budget committee maintained its recommendation to receive and expense these funds in general capital, uh, projects. Along with that, the operating budgets for equipment purchases were removed in anticipation of appropriating these requests out of the grant from the state. And that's the way the current year budget was adopted. At the September twenty-first budget committee meeting, this was discussed, and it was determined that it really is appropriate to restore these operating budgets in the departmental budgets. Because the purpose of these requests really is for operating purposes, not necessarily large capital purchases. Um, you received a copy of a spreadsheet, that spreadsheet, it was distributed to all members of county commission.
For now?
At the workshop.
Okay.
At the workshop. And the budget committee's recommendation is to restore budgets, um, it's, it's a total of one hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars in the county general fund, one thousand dollars in public libraries, sixty-five hundred in the highway department fund, for a total of one hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars in all three funds. And again, this is for operating cost. Departments will budget two or three thousand dollars in office equipment in case a printer goes down, or in case a, a, um, computer station goes down. So, this is the budget committee's recommendation.
That's the best funded line item in the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion, we approve this, and, uh, I, I, I know this is a hard question, Frank, wait, let me get a second.
Second, or, we got a motion and a second.
I, I know this is a tough question, uh, at some point, this will have to be reflected back into our budget.
It will.
And I know that's gonna take a little while, I'm sure, to get all that, all the, everything put back in the budget. But when we do get it, if we can get a copy of that, that would be nice to have our true final adopted budget.
It may be included in this spreadsheet that will be presented to you at our October budget committee meeting. If there are amendments in the county general fund, there usually are. But of course, if this passes this evening, this, along with everything else that has passed this fiscal year prior to this, will show up in that spreadsheet as approved amendments. So, all of the adjustments will be there.
You got a lot of confidence, get a lot to win now, not to me.
Who was the second?
Satterfield.
Satterfield.
Well, I second too, but...
Okay, you have a co-second.
We co-second at the same time, but that's fine.
Any further discussion on this item? Again, there's some money involved, so call the roll.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is consideration of some budget amendments in county general, public libraries, general purpose school and school federal projects. The budget committee recommends approval of all of these.
Make a motion to approve the request. Make a motion to approve the request?
Second on the motion.
We got a motion and a second.
Those Mears and...
Satterfield made it. Mears second.
What?
We don't have to do the reading.
What?
Because I'm an... Oh, man.
All things are now here.
That's for all of them. We're doing them all? That's for A through D? A through D. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments from the budget committee. Any further discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
Hurley.
Aye.
Satterfield.
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cohen.
Because I'm not an employee, aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
All right.
And finally, I would request the records to reflect that the copies of approved budget committee meeting minutes for the July and August meeting were distributed prior to the meeting, along with a summary financial statement through the end of September. Thank you, sir.